Antiques on York in Rockville, Indiana, 100 West York Street, celebrating our 10th year in business.
Would you like to testify, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Bill?
Hey, Bill.
Salute. For January, we had 289 calls, 30 were potentially violent, 28 case reports, five crashes, zero impounds, we had four alarm calls, nine arrests. According to our ECWS system, we had 27 entries, two were felonies, six were misdemeanors, six infractions, one ordinance violation, and 18 warnings. Last year, in January, we had 359 calls, 18 cases, five crashes, three impounds, seven arrests. From the ECWS, we had 45 entries, two felonies, 10 misdemeanor, 17 infraction, and 31 warnings. Also Sergeant Martin has successfully completed the public information officer route.
Tell him congratulations. I got any questions for Bill? Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
We're going to go ahead and award the Anderson Street Howard Walton community crossings. We had a bid for milestone bid, $1,322,971.10. Our matching funds will be $684,968.67.
Oh, David, that's, that's, I mean, crossing.
That's matching funds from 6CMG on the report, that's how much we were awarded.
Yeah, so our fund's going to be 630.
Our matching portion, yes.
Okay, okay.
You want to make a motion?
Oh, I'll move, I'll move.
All in favor?
Yeah, just a little more information on that, you know, it's amazing how much that little stretch of Anderson cost from 41 to Pine Drive, I mean, that is the bulk, that's $972,000. And of that, pretty much, two-thirds, just pipe, storm yard pipe and sidewalk. It's just amazing what that cost to put in. So anytime we have a project, pipes, expect a high, high, high cost.
And that is getting curved all the way to Pines, right?
I can't remember exactly, there is curve, there's curve, I think.
Yeah, road curve all the way down to Pine, it says.
Well, it goes, yeah, it goes from, well, I forget how many linear feet there are, but it's in the bid there. But I do know it starts from where the right of way is on 41, I believe.
Okay.
Going, going east.
North side?
So far.
Yeah, 1340 feet. Yeah, just on north side, you know. A lot of stuff we work around out there, got some holes, you know. But yeah, once you get past that, guys, it's pretty reasonable, you know, just from Pine down to Eastwood is 43,000, and Eastwood down to Rainbow is 98, but yeah, all our cost is up front there in that short section. But when we need it, that's why the road's falling apart, we don't have water control. So yeah, well, it'll be fun to see then.
We're more than happy to do it for you.
Well, we didn't think about starting. The question's already been asked, so.
I have given the powers of the B, I'm just estimating, I'm not in operations.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I may reach out to you tomorrow about a couple of things.
Okay. Randy has my number.
Yeah, Mitch and Stark submitted, since we're talking about running.
Yeah, but I mean, there's nothing to really talk about, is there?
No, I just think it's good to have public record of what we did.
Well, I mean, it's just going to be a Stark Street, it'll be a
Oh, you got it on there?
Be a mill and
Yeah, mill and repave, yeah, there it is.
Blacktop, new sidewalks on the north side, right?
Right, yeah.
That'll be the next round, so.
Well, let's hope we get it.
Yep.
That road is pretty rough.
Is all you have for me?
Yep.
I think so.
Okay, well, if you need to give me a call then.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody have a good evening.
You too, appreciate it.
Doug? Well, I've just got a couple of things here for sure. You guys want to pass it around, take a look at it, this is just something that we've put together on the computer down there of all the repairs. Anything, water, sewer tap, you know, like that, we get pictures, information. It's on the computer down there, we can print it out, and at any time take it to another job site, we'll be able to go back into our records and say, this is what we done, and if we have any more problems, we know before we start digging what we're going to be running into.
Good idea.
So this is just our way of keeping, and we do it for everything, we got some water taps in here. Manes that were broke and everything.
Oh, Doug was here, I think he did.
You know, you're leaving a historical trail of what you've done, yeah.
So, anybody wants to look at it, or have looked at it, but that's what
I'm curious, how you guys going to organize it to find it when you need it?
Well, that was our next step, that's what Tim Honaker is the one that done that, and that's what we got to look at, how we want to put them in there.
By street, I don't know, yeah, it's how, how would you do it?
But yeah, see, we're getting the depth, the size of line, and address in front of the house, so we know.
Yeah.
And we can always for sure fall back on this, to see, so that is one thing that Tim's been doing for me, doing a real good job at it.
I do.
But yes, we have thought about how we're going to make it easier for us to go in there, and probably would be streets, maybe might be the easiest.
I would say so, yeah, and address.
And then this here is just a picture of the banner flag, Dave, that you asked about.
Yes.
This is what it would look like, this is just a picture the company sent us, if that's something.
So that'd just be that?
Yeah, that hangs on poles on 41, that's what it would look like if we decided to do something like that. We got the information on that.
Bill didn't see, show Bill.
I'm sorry, Doug. But, so that's that, and then like I said, then now we have, the community hall has been done, the leak roof, drywall and the inside's all been repaired, so Sean is, and it looks really nice, so he did a good job. We've got two trees down on Pennsylvania. And that's looking, we got one more stump to remove, and Benjamin's is completely done, they have power, so on our end over there is just completely done. And you guys have seen the clock is up, and the washer compactor is up and running, and everything, so. We got the clocks off just a few minutes, we're going to correct that tomorrow. And then, just a B and T on the main water project, looks to be here on March, and everything, so it's his plan, let you guys know. We did get the poles for 41, and they started putting them up today. The ones that were knocked over, the one at the intersection of Howard Avenue and 41, the company forgot to order the arm, so the pole be up without the arm, but they put a rush on it, it was on their end, they forgot to order it. So, they have started putting them up, they should be up this week, and on, and everything. And, so on the water project, the 120, Bailey, I talked to, you know, you see my information, she is going to come spend a morning with us, and walk us through the website on there, and how they want everything entered, so we can start on that. So, she'll be walking some of the, a couple of guys through, so everybody knows about it. E-Max is going to start the Martin Streets off tomorrow morning, to lower the water line, the main that's running, that we can see.
Oh.
So they'll be here in the morning, and should finish that tomorrow, so. And then, the 36 lift, we've had some trouble with it, the lift station. BBC was here, they've ordered a part for it, and then, right after that went, we had a pump go down at Strawberry Road. So we had a new pump put in there, redid it, and then BBC will take the old one back and give us a quote on rebuild before. They'll have to rebuild, it's our backup pump, but before I get them the okay, I will get a price. I'm guessing somewhere probably between 7 and 12,000 to rebuilds.
Wow.
And everything, so, that's the old news. The guys are starting to patch the roads and everything, we're hoping to have parking lot lights up, I think we thought we'd have them done the next day or two. So we'll get them up, and they only, did you want to talk about the sweeper real quick?
Yeah, let's go ahead and talk about that sweeper, let's get things cleaned up.
And then I just got one other thing after that, so.
Well, Doug, Doug sent out a estimate on getting the old sweeper repaired from Michael Todd Industrial Supply. Yeah, it's 36,282. He said it pretty much get it back into, well, now, did this include anything with the engine?
No, the engine would be probably between 8 to 10,000 dollars itself.
So this is just all the parts?
That's just the parts in the back, the conveyor part, the collection boxes got a hole in it, and
Right, right, yeah, there's
And stuff like that, would be some of the bearings and bushings that need replaced in the old one.
For a machine that's really, we've put a lot of money in.
Well, yeah, but
It's cheaper than the new one?
It's cheaper than the new one, and, and, and we'll get to the new one in a minute, even if we order a new one today, you're looking at a year and a half, a year and a half. So we need, we need, we need to have this thing working.
How much was the new one?
340,000.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, you know, Doug was looking for some, some funds, obviously, to, to repair that, I would say we should repair it. He was 100, what were you under on the equipment budget, you were with budget 272, we came in, you requested 176, so, yeah, you're about 100,000 below what we had budgeted for the year, so. So we have some funds set aside in our budget for, for equipment repair and replacement. So I would suggest that we get the darn thing
I'll make a motion, we repair it, second.
All in favor?
As far as that motor engine, Doug, I mean, what
Well, right now, he's, he's put some, some kind of head gasket repair stuff in, and it's holding.
Okay.
It's not leaking any grease right now into the oil, so we're doing, last few times we were fine. So we can keep nursing that and just see how far we can get. But yeah, you're looking, I think when we had the last one built was around 8,000 dollars, and that's a few years ago, so I'm assuming we're probably looking more at 10 or 12, easily, to rebuild it now.
Now, onto the new sweeper, which will kind of take us into the already 2.0 thing, I don't know, we probably had that somewhere in your stuff, Randy, but anyway, the application work that Stretch Point did was just really good. And it was discussed about, we should maybe try to combine the sweeper to that application, be more likely to get it. It took me a day or so to, my time to figure out, when I had time to work on it, figure out how to get in modify a PDF file. So I was able to do that, went in, started modifying, and I became concerned about, you know, this is a great document, I'm telling you, I do not want to mess up a potential 1.6 grant, 1.6 million grant, for a sweeper. So I didn't, I didn't try to add that in, because I, converting the pictures to PDF, I'm trying to get them in there, and yeah, it's just beyond my technical expertise. So, the sweeper was not submitted with the East Side Square, which was submitted, January 31st, 5:23 in the morning, I believe, I remember right. So yeah, but back to sweeper thing. You know, my, my recommendation is we just plan ahead and, and buy this thing over a five or seven year, they have five or seven year finance thing. We're going to need one, we should, we should plan ahead and get it. If we plan now, we can set some money aside, every year set some money aside for the next year payment, and we'll have the thing somewhere, Doug had some information on it. But here it is, yeah, you can do a five or seven year, I don't want to call it lease to home, but that's kind of what it is. It's 84,236 a year for five, it's 3,000, 263 for seven. The thing, if you were like said to buy it today, you would be out to, first payment due July 2025. Because they're giving around 12, 14 months, I think, from the date of
They said about 12 to 14 months.
So, you know, I think we just need to start planning to start, buy, you know, sign the paperwork, be ready next year, make a first payment. Meanwhile, keep this one we have going, and, and see how it does, but the more and more streets we, we get fixed, you know, gutters whatnot, the more, more we need street sweepers. And we also do 4136, a couple times a year. And you know, 41, it's kind of nasty right now.
Yeah.
Well, it just, you know, what do you guys think?
I think if we're going to buy it, like we talked about before, we got to have some kind of training.
Yeah.
Keep this thing from getting tore up, just everybody jump.
Well, right, you have to have designated drivers, you can't have
Well, right now, there's only two that operate it, Alan and I.
And you.
And obviously, we get a new one, we'll probably add another one, probably get a Michael Pettis, probably, he seems to be pretty good with equipment and everything, so that would be one of my choices.
Yeah, I know it's a lot of money, but doggone it, it's, you know, the streets are kind of like the front door of your house, good to have them clean, and we certainly have a lot of visitors, and I think just by keeping our front door clean.
So is the sweeper on the Bobcat still, on our Skidster still, I mean, we can use it.
Oh, yeah, it just doesn't have that side brim, they got messed off there.
So basically, we can't use it on Kirby, but we
No, you couldn't use it on Kirby.
Okay.
Is this one company that makes the street sweeper? I don't know how many manufacturers there are, Elgin's kind of like the, the, what I always see around, I don't
Elgin, and there's a Pelican, but most of them, most of the one he sells is Elgin. And we did go to Plainfield and actually watch it operate, and, and everything, and they've actually ordered a second one after ordering, so they have another one coming.
Can we just buy their old one?
Well, they're not getting rid of the old one, they're, they're going to have two, so. It was a real nice outfit, I'm sure there's all kinds of nice outfits, depending on where they're at, getting them here, being able to go see them.
These are made over in Illinois, I believe, not too far from us. I think you're right. Well, anyway, I, I, I just think we should start planning on doing this, and it should have a useful life of at least a couple decades.
Is that a motion, or?
Definitely a good one. Well, I'm making the motion, yes, I make the motion that we, we start the process to acquire this, this, called a Region X by Elgin.
Yeah, and that one has a back hose on the back of it. We got everything on it, it's got an extra water tank for sweeping, and it's got a power washer on it, which it comes with it, but he gave us, or figured an extra water tank. Then there's a, like I said, a suction hose on the back, for like bump outs, it'll be, if a guy can get out and clean them up, or even he's sweeping, comes across a storm box, we'll pull the grate off and clean it out with that while he's sitting there, so. You can, you can do more than just sweep, so I mean, it's, with the bump outs, that suction hose is definitely going to be a plus, because you can't get into them curves and get out, so that'd definitely be a bonus on that.
What would it do with leaves?
Yeah, so that guy said one thing about it was, is being vacuumed. That's one selling point, the reason they got the second one, is because he said it does really nice job on the leaves.
Nice.
And it's got camera, so you can sit there and watch it actually vacuum the leaves, if you need to slow down, speed up, whatnot, you can actually sit and watch it right there, so it's, it's a nice outfit.
Heck, yeah.
All in favor?
Which one are you planning on proceeding with?
Well, Doug has all the paperwork, if you want, for the minutes tonight, I mean, basically Oh, the five, five years.
Yeah, it'll be so nice on the square.
Yeah, right now, my thing has a docket fee of $299. I don't know, did you get, did you see that?
The only thing else I got is, is back on Martin Street, the storm drains, the ditch is going down the side, and we looked into putting some pipe in there, and then cover it, so the ditches are gone, everything. And the pipe for that, and my forfeit is for drops, we're looking at 3,568.76. So if we want to move on that, be the purchase from the pipe and everything.
I'll make a motion, second.
All in favor?
And on that too, we looked into Caterpillar and McAllister, and Collin, on possibly renting a mini to dig the ditch out and set the pipe in. And McAllister can have us one for a week, looks to be 2,735.07. And Collin said for a week, there's this 1,200, but they don't have the ditching bucket, so we can still do it, it just won't have the
Well, that ditching bucket's kind of the key, it's going to give you a nice, nice flat each, I mean, wouldn't that be the way you want to do it?
So, but, but yeah, that would be 30, what'd they say, 27, 35 to rent a mini.
Could we, once we get that completed and stoned, could we durapatch the top of that stone?
I think we could, yeah, I really, I mean
And stiffen it up some.
Yes, it would, we can get it in there, yeah, but I don't see why we couldn't.
I mean, obviously, it's going to be a benefit of widening it, you know, where, but it also, you know, you're going to have, the RVs are definitely going to use it, so.
Now you bring that up, twice in the last week, there's been two
Semis.
Semis, come all the way down to Anderson and have to back, all the way down the end and back, all the way back out to 41, I don't know what changed, if Google Maps has changed something, or so maybe there's a new business out that way they're trying to get to, or
I passed it on the day.
I don't know what's going on, but that's not good. I got to get the tractor back in, backwards.
I know, I didn't just turn right and then go through.
Hey, Dave, I make a motion, we allow him to rent that
Oh.
To do what?
To rent the mini from
Sorry.
McAllister.
Was there a second, all in favor?
All right, sorry.
So yeah, that, that's concerning, I don't, I don't hope that stops. So where'd you meet one at?
Anderson, right in front of my Beverly's house, same one you probably saw, this morning about 8:00 AM.
I know we've got a sign up
We do.
Dollar General, is there one we could put?
Well, apparently, there's a sign on that 41, just north of the road that goes down to, well, just Pascot's north there that goes
200 north?
Yeah, apparently, there's no, is there no semi on a sign on that?
Right, they're trying to all designate it on the, what is that, 250, or, I don't
Where do they want it?
There's a
Cut through this a little while.
There's a road that's designated, and they've told the lumberyard to have their people use that road.
450.
Uh, 450, yeah.
Well
They're wanting, because then they can focus their efforts to keep their upkeep on the road to one specific road that's a heavy traffic road, but but yeah, there's a sign where they're not supposed to go past the, the organic food place there on 200.
We have a sign right there by, by Dollar General.
Right.
And then Marshall has a sign on their main street, not letting them go down that either, or trying to funnel them all through 450, I just couldn't
Is that the one up there by the radio?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why, I mean, what I'm saying, about the one at Dollar General, though, it's kind of cluttered.
Yeah, no, it's
You know, but then there was a place we could put one on the south side of Anderson, that would kind of stick out, and, you know.
Well, once we do some land, or rebuilding up there, perhaps we'll have a better
Yeah, they sure don't want them on there after that.
I'll, I'll drive up for them, I'll see if I can come up to the place, maybe, up that way, maybe.
He was fully loaded this morning, and every single piece of timber he could fit on there was on there.
They load them up.
There was one on Stark Street yesterday.
A semi?
Heading towards Ben, I mean, Burnham Avenue.
So that means he had it down on Howard, probably, well, I guess it could have came down, Virginia, or, or Erie.
They come down Erie a lot.
Yeah.
That's because they're rough on that signs by your house. But I know we're going to fit on that drain too, on Martin Street, if you ever go down it, we're starting to lose the edge of the road, where it's just horse mouth, so that'll be a plus, for next time repaving, it should hold up much better.
Yeah, that could get kind of dangerous.
Well, if you meet an RV in there, or even a trailer, it's
Well, I'm sitting there, because I'm not backing out.
I mean, if you got off the road there, it's not great.
No, 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 you might be in trouble.
You're definitely bottom of a car out there.
Oh, yeah.
Are you going to do any, is there any trees that'd be trimmed back though, through there?
Yes, we're going to go down and that one, and obviously Vertinia, and then we're going to go down Bristol Road, and get them all trimmed back too, so we're still but yeah, we'll get that all trimmed back, so we'll have a better view going down through there.
I would also recommend Anderson at the very east end. That's getting pretty rough, especially if we're going to go back to Rainbow Drive, get all that stuff on the north side, so. How are you, anything else?
I think that's it for me, if you have more questions on it.
Doug, can I go back to, what was your total on the supplies, I was writing on the stat, I'm sorry. There's 3,000 something, I thought.
Oh, the
On the, the supplies from that is 3,568.76.
Who's that from, or is that a common?
That's from utility supply. And then, you need to excavate the place.
Yeah, I have 2,000. Thank you.
So, I have a few things. The ordinance violations, we had somebody that was in the water pit modifying things, they paid their fine, admitted guilt. They did ask for their wrench back, I don't know if we have a wrench or ratchet or something.
We have a wrench, we'll get it returned too.
We got to return that, but, but they paid their fine, so it's escalating fine, so if it happens again, he understands that it's going to be significantly more. The deer property, we were able to get that resolved, the property's been cleaned up, my understanding is we shouldn't have any further problems from them, based on what their attorney had indicated, so. I have two properties, or we have two properties that are estate properties, but no estate's been filed, the person's deceased, nobody's laid claim to the home. I don't know what you guys want to do with those, I mean, I don't have a responsible party I can go after on those.
Are the taxes paid so far today?
I haven't checked that, I mean, we could wait for tax sale potentially, so I'll make a note to check that.
What, where were they at?
For 4 East Park and 210 South Erie. There's, I mean, we filed, but we haven't been able to get service because there's nobody. So I'll check property taxes, that might be a path. I have another one where we got a 200 judgment fine against them, they've never paid that. The process to collect that is like we would on small claims of proceedings supplemental, are you guys okay with me pursuing that, to try to collect the 200 fine? A lot of the properties, Bill and I talked, a lot of the properties with the weather, we're kind of monitoring come springtime. You know, we've resolved through Triple G, as far as the alphabet, I can't remember how many letters are in the alphabet, but I'm not smarter than a fifth grader, I guess. Well, that's good to know, so 52 plus, I don't know, so about 57 of them that have been resolved. And judgments in multiple ones have been paid, some of them are pending on the property, but probably will never be paid, because they don't work, or things of that nature. And then there's about six that I need to get with Bill on, because somehow I haven't filed those, and so I need to figure those out with him. And then, about 10 that are pending, so, so we've made a lot of headway, as far as the ordinance violations. Bill did give me a handy list to go through, so I went through each one to kind of see status on everything, and he's very accurate on his record keeping, so. So that's kind of where we're at on things. I'll try to come up with a better solution on the estate properties, but the tax sale might be the way to go about that, that just takes 18 months for that to work, so. So if we're a year into it, it might only be another six months or so. Questions about any of that? Um, questions about any of that? That's really all I had to report on for a public meeting, unless there's something else I'm forgetting.
Alright, well, thank you, Brad.
Claims to present, total is one million, three seventy-five, eight eleven fifty-three. And I'd like to get an approval on those pending, they're reviewing them tomorrow. Um, there are two very large claims, I'm not doubting the total, um, just the whole balancing. Um, there's six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar Okra water grant, um, I believe that was for B and T for stored materials, so that's a big portion of that total. Um, the other one was uh two hundred and five thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars for the strawberry lift station. Um, for grades, that included the compactor and the additional work that he had to do, which I've just sent the reimbursement for. Um, we were approved for up to two hundred thousand, don't know if we'll get the whole two hundred back, but we'll at least get the one eighty-six of that two oh five, but you may not get our additional eighteen thousand of work, but.
I'll make a motion to approve pending park's questions in your review.
Well, you know, uh, there's, there's a, um, a lot of stuff there, we had, we're, yeah, I, I really don't have any questions.
Y'all look okay.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
I just want to have a chance to look at all those in the morning.
It's morning too. You'll just ask her later.
Uh, January fifteenth minutes, anybody have any problems, issues?
Motion to.
Everybody was here for those.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Say I read it, it looks okay.
Thank you. Um, would like to um ask for, the park board had their first organizational meeting last month. Um, part of their discussion was increasing the lifeguard wage from ten to twelve dollars. So I do have an amendment for that, based on the pool season coming up.
So what's the impact on that, I mean, it's, it's not, it's just.
Now, we always have something left, and we're just trying to keep it in line with all the other area.
Right.
It's one thing brought up about that is uh Turkey Run pays theirs twelve dollars, so, just trying to stay competitive.
Yeah, we.
Have you got any applicants yet?
No, we have another meeting here, two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, week after next, yeah.
How many gardens would, would you like to hire?
Six. How would we like? We'd like ten, just to have people to pick from.
Is that including the manager, or?
No.
You have a manager plus.
Right.
I'm gonna have to, I'll have to correct the yearly on that, cause that will increase that, and those look like the same numbers that were on the last time, so. The only change on here for now is the ten to twelve dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright. Yeah, we're budgeting for seventeen thousand five hundred right now for total, I got that.
What's that bump is up to, I mean, we're still.
Well, well, depends on how many hours they put in at twelve dollars now, and I'm just, you know, that's what we've been at, seventeen five for total, but, but.
There are always rain days or whatever, cold days.
So how long is the pool open, four hours, five hours, do you have night swims?
Eleven to six, and then they have parties, can have parties from six to eight, and eight to ten.
So do you ever have just open swims?
Eleven to twelve is adult swim.
What do you mean open swim?
Well, I mean, just where it's publicly commanded, swimming at night.
Yes.
No. No, but it has to be a party.
We used to do that as kids, I didn't know if they still live or not.
We have a lot of parties that are booked though.
Yeah.
They book a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Maybe we can get businesses to sponsor night swims.
Okay.
Alright, October and November banks, balance, just need a signature on the top sheet, here, please, those.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
That's all I have on my original report.
Okay.
Where we at?
I was gonna ask Bruce and Mike if they had anything.
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything neither.
Good, glad to hear it.
And you don't want money, good.
You didn't know you could ask for money, you're right.
Did you want to go with projects, Brandy here?
Yeah, if you want to talk about any of them, you mentioned Stark Street a little bit earlier, so we've got an application for all of Stark there, and then North Marshall Road that would just pass. Help me, Adams.
Uh, yeah.
And that would be to the limits, um, that'll include sidewalks on the north side, running from a lane to the school, to Jefferson Street.
Mm-hmm.
Right there, so um, that application submitted, award dates uh late March, early April. Um, Community Crossings, we awarded the one to Milestone for the Anderson Walton Howard, so as soon as Warren gets with the guys and gets a date on that, I'll send out when they'll be starting and where they'll be starting on that. Um, South Market, no real updates, um, other than, I mean, obviously, they've been moving around. John from B and T has been real good about calling and making sure we know where they're at, what they're doing, they were up on the square more today, they'll be tying in later this week. They're gonna move back down toward Pennsylvania Street and have that all closed off to tie in those water lines. Um, Doug mentioned the water, the one twenty water, that's the lead inventory that's due in October of this year. The parking lot, um, just want to mention the Patriot City Grant period still is running through February twenty-eighth. So to date, um, we've raised nine thousand five hundred of the twelve thousand five hundred that were needed to approve that. Um, Okra, or drinking water, B and T has of course got the approval to begin work on that. Um, strawberry lift stations completed, and the storm drain, um, I haven't heard any more back from Cullums, but I think they were pretty much getting ready to start weather permitting in February.
They were waiting on, that's my, I called in, last time they were, it was waiting on some pipe, material, then they were gonna get started.
Um, we are still, it's up for our next meeting, but we will be and are taking bids on the Jefferson Street property that was demoed. So that's in for the next meeting to be awarded. Um, I believe that minimum bid is seventeen two fifty?
Sounds right.
It was in the paper, ran in the paper a couple of weeks.
And do we have bids?
Uh, not yet, but um, yeah, seventeen two fifty would be the minimum bid on that, so we'll take those up until um four o'clock here on the nineteenth. And then open those bids and award that hopefully um at five o'clock.
Exciting.
That's it.
Hmm?
I think that's it, I don't see how many.
Oh, I'm just waiting for David to give me the floor.
What kind of old business you got, Park?
Well, you know, a lot of loose ends. You know, one, one thing, Brandy, you know, we had this request from uh Department of Revenue about sharing our food and beverage tax information. Uh, we never have done, have we done anything, we haven't done anything?
No.
I don't know why we shouldn't, I don't know who they, they want to share it with, I mean, is it any, any?
There's just not a whole lot of information on there, we have to report it, this is the first year we have to report it.
Yeah.
To the state, March first.
That's a DLGF.
But yeah, I'm not real sure where this comes into play, why they're asking us to share, and what all the information they're wanting us to share, but they're wanting us to fill an application out to.
Well, I don't know, I haven't.
They just didn't seem.
It's interesting.
Understand it all, means that fact that they're going to the state.
Right, they weren't ever have it, so I don't, I'm not certain what they were really asking, that's why I asked the first, somebody with your contact to get more information.
Well, yeah, okay, where does confidential agreement come from, I got this somewhere.
It might have been on one of those emails, though.
Well.
They've got it as an agreement that they're wanting us to do an agreement between Rockville and the Indian Department of Revenue.
They're requesting not, you shall, I say.
Well, yeah, basically, that's confidential information, and to go outside of the, share that, I, I assume that, that, that there's clients out there that may, may. Want that information to see what kind of activity, food and beverage wise, there is in town.
My biggest thing is, why would we have to enter a contract or an agreement with them if we're already uploading that initial data to the gateway?
Cause they don't, they, they, they can't share.
Numbers are there.
They can't share.
Well, but, but you have access, you can get into the gateway and see those reports, those numbers, though, like the public can, so I don't know.
We have to interest them, yeah, doesn't mean the city doesn't.
It's not the individual business, it's.
No, it's a total.
Still a reported total that's going on the state's website.
I, I, it's.
I say, don't do anything.
Purposefully vague.
Purposely vague, I don't like when it turns.
So it's, making the information themselves. The department proposes entering an agreement by designated personnel on a semi-annual basis, certain confidential information collected by the department pursuant to innkeeper's tax, food and beverage tax. And cites the code where they get to collect it, then it says designated personnel is the group of authorized and designated representatives of an entity that has adopted one or more of the aforementioned taxes.
If it doesn't say shall anywhere, I say.
It doesn't, they clearly know what they're entitled to do, cause they cite to that multiple times. I, can I have more time to look at it?
Well, please do, I, I just, I'm just curious, what in the world it's all about?
And I'll remember.
Yeah, a quick call, I think they have a website you can go to.
I'll send you the other email that.
Paragraph, I think just about essentially read.
Yeah, it's very, very vague.
It's confidential. But yet I'm gonna be posting it to the gateway.
Yeah, so the total's on gateway, so I don't know why they want any more detail.
If you want to know what process we have, so then you can addition.
Cause anybody can get on gate, can anybody get?
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's certain things, unless that's something that you're not, you can't access, but.
Well, that's one thing, been lying around on my desk, I thought I'd bring it tonight just for you to entertain. Um, are you entertained?
Maybe you should stay out of your desk.
Park, I'm gonna find you a different hobby.
Okay, okay.
Stamp collecting.
Something that doesn't make my brain hurt.
I'm sorry, so, so that was one thing, the, the, the uh, I know we had a PCI meeting, you guys had a piece, meeting PCI. And we, we still have no resolution on.
I don't think their meeting was sometime until the middle of this month.
Okay, so they're going back.
Maybe they meet one time a month, maybe.
They're going back to their board.
Meeting last month was canceled.
Uh, and the question is just, you know, the expense that we, 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 we build them for. Yeah.
Uh, we broke it down more and um explained to them more that, you know, the break that they did get, the bill could have easily been.
Could've been more.
Ten thousand dollars easy.
Okay. Well, okay, for another day. Uh. Yeah, well, while we're going down this road, I mean, the bathroom situation, you know, this keeps coming up, it's going around and around and around, I sure would like to put that thing to bed. Uh, you know, Main Street just had their meeting. Uh. Big sigh, uh, well, yeah, I, I get the minutes, cause I'm a member of that, that organization. Uh, apparently courthouse will not be open on the weekends anymore, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, no, it won't.
Okay, uh, concerned that they weren't cleaned properly, and, and it's, you know, and they, they, they discussed uh. This as a future location for bathrooms, which there's, there's been some people expressed concern about that.
This spelled in?
Yeah, yeah.
Took them a whopping two weeks to violate the agreement with the county.
I'm sorry?
Took them a whopping two weeks to violate the agreement with the county, they even have the paper signed before they violated it.
I'm sorry, David.
Who's doing this?
Using the restrooms.
Well, it's been discussed that maybe this should be a public restroom facility for restrooms down the road. Uh, you know.
Buyers can do what they want with.
Well, that's it, it's it, it would be put up the bid, and the, the average, we all know two, two bids is the minimum bid. Uh, you know, personally, anything on the square, I'd like to try to see it retail, I mean, that's what drives this little town. Is uh the retail, that's why people come here. But uh, so, so this, they take you back to our, well, the restrooms we do have, we do have restrooms. Uh, granted, they're not open all year, but we do have restrooms. And, and, you know, yeah, I go back to, to Madison, Indiana, I go down there, and they have a public restroom designated on their maps, and, you know, I think you've been there, most of them. Yeah, it's very nice, it's an old gas station that's converted, and by gosh, it's pretty neat, they don't have one just here, there, and everywhere. Uh, you know, maybe we should just look at focusing on what we have, and how we can improve it, and, 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 we already have a restroom, so. And why not focus on marketing it as the place to go when you have to go, and, and improve the facilities that we have, is my thought. Uh, I don't see adding more restrooms, this increases the overall cost of, I mean, what do you folks think?
You're talking about just during the festival?
I'm talking year round, festival, festival, well, that's a wild, how, how, how do you handle that many people? It's hard, and you're gonna have to have porta potties in every corner to be, and probably it's still not make everyone happy, but, um.
It was mentioned in that meeting that PCI would like to see us put heat in the bathroom at the depot, so that it can be maintained and stay open all year.
Well, if we were to do that, we're talking.
That was just, that was something they were proposing.
Well, that's interesting, again, that goes back to the, the, the con idea, well, you know, let's invest in what we have instead of create more to have to maintain, and maybe, you know, we could re- remodel those, insulate, I don't know. I mean, it's, I don't know, right now, we just have a block building with some stools and some some girls. Um, I just wanted to bring it up, this thing's never, it's, it's, we waste a lot of time on, on, on this, spend a lot of time, it's just going around and around and around. So maybe we should start thinking at it, looking at it from a different perspective here.
I don't have a problem with it, but it's like I stated before, I don't think the town should alone go into this.
Well, I agree.
There's two or three organizations out here that need to step up if, if we're gonna do this.
Okay.
And, I mean, that's just the way I feel about it, why should we carry the burden, I mean, of this? I mean, why should people of Rockville carry the burden of this, I mean.
Okay.
I'm just.
That's a fair statement.
Just the way I'm looking at it, I mean.
I agree with it, uh, there, there's uh other organizations that uh.
Well, and I, I also continue to maintain, if you've got a store, to me, it's a cost of doing business, and you can write your toy, or your paper towel off.
If you want to have a restroom, I, I think, I believe one business on the east side is actually remodeling to, to have a restroom. Uh, you know, we've had a restroom for ten and a half years now, never had a major problem, uh, never had any problem, I mean, it's a couple times in ten and a half years. Uh, I've had someone come up and say, I think your, your toilet's kind of clogged up, it's not fully draining, and go back and plunge, you know, I've had people, it's really fun during the festival, every year, the same people, there's half dozen, they'll come up and put money on the counter, a couple bucks, thanks to the restroom. Uh, so, you know, it's an individual's choice, but as far as a town, and David tried, these other organizations, the PCI and Main Street, you know, we, we, we need to get some, some agreement. For maintaining year-round restrooms, perhaps, you know, I, I think that's a good, I, I just like the idea of focusing on what we have, we already have the asset, let's improve that, let's get that on every map and whatever out there, so people know. When I go to Madison, I know, now, once I've been there, I know, well, if I want to go to restroom, public restroom's right over there.
Park, the restroom's on the map now.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Locator map.
Good.
There we go.
So that, that's just all I want to say about that, is bring it up, think about it, sleep on it, uh-huh.
Looking to heat into it, though, if that's the case.
Do what?
If you want to keep it open year-round, we should look into heat.
Well, yeah, we need to look at just what we take to make it efficient, to do that.
To us maintain it, man hours.
Well, yeah, I know, there's a lot of issues there.
It's not, yeah.
We're already maintaining it in the summers.
Right, but we're adding another, how many months on?
Well, another five, six, probably.
We'll close it, and we're after the festival, and we don't open them until first of April.
January of March, about five more months, I know, I know. It's just conversational topic right now, but I think that, that's the direction I, I think looks like uh something maybe, not everybody, but more.
Well, who's gonna, so, somebody wants to buy this building and then put in private bathrooms that they're gonna monitor, cause we're not.
Well, I don't think that was the idea, I think the idea was it to town would, would, would.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, anyway, nothing about bathrooms, we, I've got a few more things, I want to. You know, one thing, Brandon and I were talking about the comp plan, and they're gonna reapply for that real soon, they had a scoring thing, uh, that they went through recently. Uh, yeah, what is it, is it, is it the fifteenth that opens, Brandy?
I think so, yeah.
And do the seventeenth of May, uh, we did good in some categories, some of the categories. And do the seventeenth of May, uh, we did good in some categories, some of the categories we, we didn't do so well on. So that's coming up again, yeah, yeah, I think, the last time we did a comp plan, didn't we have a open public meeting where people came in?
We have to, I mean, it's one of the requirements, it's the application.
But did we have maps and stuff and people to go, well, we didn't do that for this time, did we?
I, like I said, I don't know, I mean, Cindy was our grant writer on that, and the only thing I heard I really talked about afterwards, after talking with Sarah from Okra, one of the big things is, is doing a survey again, so we're gonna have to.
Well, you know.
Have to complete another survey.
Well, we need to get, I mean, for the comp plan, and we discussed this at partnership, as you're not aware of, I mean, that comp plan, master plan, definitely gives us a layout of what we need, you know, what.
Where to focus.
Yeah, where to focus at, and what, what's gonna move us forward, and it, and that just about plan itself does help with grant funding. I mean, that, when, when they're looking at it, you know, this town has, has a master plan, so, I mean, we gotta push that to the public, so they get, so we can get their support on this.
You know what's amazing, David, I mean, the comp plan we did back whenever it was, seven years, well, October fifteen, you know, we've completed a lot of the stuff that we, we have in here, so I don't know, I feel like we need to.
Well, another one of the areas that we really lack in is public support and public letters.
Well, that's why I think we need to have that.
We need to have people that are willing to give us public support and letters on those to submit.
Can you, can you count comments on chatter?
Chatter comments?
Well, you would be able, if they were helpful comments.
Usually not helpful.
Right, usually it's just criticism without a tendency.
I, 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 what I'm saying is perhaps we need to have one of those kind of public meetings at the community center, and, and where we have the maps, I think, you know, Structure Point's one that can do those maps.
Well, didn't they do the last one, though?
I'm sorry?
Didn't they do the last one that they had at the community center last year? Wasn't it about a year ago?
Well, that was for the project, for the South Market, but they did it for the comp plan, I believe, as well.
Yeah.
That one with the school?
No, we had the, had the South Market was at the school.
You're right, yeah, South Market was at the school.
I mean, it was a decent turnout, but it could have been better.
Well, if you want public input, you need to get into an event, perhaps you could provide.
When you apply for these Okra grants, that's what they're looking for.
And shrimp.
And shrimp.
And if you don't, if you don't have the public support, then they're not interested in looking at you, so.
Okay, well.
We gotta get the, we gotta get the public behind this.
Well, we need to advertise it, we need to have a date, we need to have a, we'll get together and try to get some.
What we can do in March. Lydia, put on a fish fry.
Fish fry, Lydia.
Nope, chili cook-off.
Chili now, okay.
We have something at the Elks in March for it.
Well, you know, that's something, I mean, seriously, we need to have something to bring people out and to get input, and, and, and perhaps even have some public letter support forms, you know, that they take, take.
A template and they can just sign their name.
Yeah, well, something of that sort, um, but it's important, like Dave was saying, and we need to, and we need to get it done so we'll be in better shape, and it's our roadmap for where do we need to look, what do we need to do next? A lot of what we've been doing, but, so I just want to bring that up. I'm almost done.
Only two more folders.
Cemetery board met today, uh, nothing real exciting there, yeah, this fence thing keeps coming up, it started sometime last year, I think Kevin was the, the spear, tip of the spear on that.
Coz that crappy, uh, late bits between you and Cooper and the cemetery.
Yeah, but, you know, and there's been alternatives submitted, uh, uh, or suggested and bid, and I won't mention bid amounts, because, well, it's not appropriate, appropriate, but, uh. You know, Kevin showed a, we've gone all the way from a, a wood post, white vinyl, maintenance issues with that, and it cracks, and it's just not a good idea, and Kevin, uh, the recent quotes were for a split rail cedar, which is very low maintenance, but I had this rustic vision in my mind and was not too crazy about it, until he showed me an actual picture of a modern split rail cedar. Yeah, by gosh, it's just not too bad, very easy to maintain, so, so that's where we're at, no decision made, just want to let this board know that that's what that board's talking about, so, you know. Stormwater, we met a couple weeks ago, I think, yeah, but you weren't there, Steve was there, and you were there?
Yeah.
Yeah, foggy night, god, that was horrible.
That was.
The only thing there is, we need to get the brandy and, and set up temporary loan between electric cash reserve and stormwater, I just want to make sure I brought that up, and you got a note, so you remind me, but yeah, we need to get that done. Uh, so I have the funds to pay the contractor. Yeah, oh, well, I'd like to go back, if I may, to. To Anderson.
We're gonna be bringing your folder in for the park board.
Well, my point is, it should have been a twenty-five percent cost, and the estimate was done a little more accurate, and it came out to be a forty-eight percent cost for the town, and that's just frustrating. Darn it, you know, frustrating. But it is what it is, and it sure as heck needs to be done, so Wednesday, you gonna, you gonna make it Wednesday? Solid waste?
I don't think so.
No.
I'm working my shift, so.
Okay, yeah, we have solid waste Wednesday at nine, nine-nine.
Can we talk about this again?
Yeah, sure.
Um, so I read through it, it never indicates in here whatsoever what they intend to use the information from, they are wearing the share information with you, but also doesn't indicate what that information would be useful for. So it does say that they'd be willing to talk to their legal department about the information and what its uses could be for the potential agreement.
Our legal department talk, does their legal department?
Or any entity that you want to talk to them.
Well, I'm just, I, I, I just, what, 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 what do they want to do?
Yeah, just have a phone call and say.
Tell you if it's anything like these documents. Yeah, there's nothing in there indicates what they would use the information for, or what.
Well, like Brandy said, they have, they have the totals, in fact, well, internally, they know it broken down by, by organization or company, but.
But it does have a lot of information in there about confidentiality, and that you can be held accountable for breaching this agreement if you sign this agreement.
Put it away somewhere.
So I guess where I'm at is, I mean, I can talk to them, but unless they're gonna actually tell us what they're using it for.
We're not interested.
Why would we sign this?
They asked why, it's available on Gateway.
They have the information.
They just can't share.
In, in her response, the response to her, they were trying to make it sound like they were sharing it with us for our purposes, but we're the ones giving them the information, so I'm not. So it was just a lot of double speak, with no, they didn't give any indication on what they're actually trying to accomplish here.
Well, if you would, one phone call, don't spend more than two minutes, yeah, it'd be, be interesting, just know, what, what is this?
I'll forward you the other email for the March first deadline.
But, yeah, I mean, they went to great lengths not to be clear about anything, in my opinion.
Um, just to bring it up again, we talked last week after reading a sewer Zoom meeting, uh, that capital asset management plan, which we have to do for ourselves every year, capital asset management, but they referenced, or talked about that in that Zoom meeting, we need that, probably four or one, I think, to do that.
I, I did get a call from the State Indiana Department of Health, the onsite division, because the engineering firm has reached out to them to try to get some support from the state, so they called me to see locally whether we are in support, and I.
Are you in support with?
We are.
Oh, that's, that's good, uh.
Wait, why are you supporting?
Regional wastewater thing.
The health department is?
So this, what they're, they are wanting that, because the capital asset plan is something that's uploaded annually as well.
Well, it goes, it is.
Who wants it?
Well, it was brought up, this is a meeting.
With the regional wastewater stuff?
Yes, it's a regional wastewater, they just made that it needs to be done, it goes in with, uh, because there's two funding sources there, there's RDA and there's SRF. And probably with both of those, you have to submit that to, to, with your filing for funding, so that, that's why they were bringing it up. I just wanted to give you a heads up, I, I don't, Doug, you worked partially on it before, haven't you, you've had some.
On capital asset.
Basically, just listing of your assets.
Well, we, we have the report, I just didn't realize, it didn't look like that was something that they were asking me to upload to the application. I mean, I, my conversation with John McGee and the engineering firm for the county, that they were kind of done with what I needed to do, so that was, but I'll look back into it.
Well, I'll tell you what, you've communicated with Annie from Westler.
Yes, her and John.
Yeah, Annie would be a good one, just to, you know, maybe clear up.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I'm done.
You're done, okay. Kevin, you got anything you want to talk?
Nope, you got one.
John, you got anything you want to talk about?
No.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye. We get that in hour, that's pretty good.